I'd like to bring to order the December 22 meeting of the Town Council. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, organization under God, individual liberty, and justice for all.
Mrs. Mello.
Counselor Sousa.
Present.
Counselor Perry.
Present.
Counselor Mello.
Present.
Counselor Lambert.
Present.
Counselor DiMederos.
Present.
Counselor Shabbat.
Present.
Counselor Pelletier will be late.
I'd like at this point to bring up the Honorable Representative John G. Edwards. And Senator Philag.
Thank you, Madam President. Senator Philag and I have been giving the town's senior center grants at the request of your senior center director, Janice Gomes, for several years. And this year is a particularly ripe year for the town. We were able to procure a little bit more money this year for the senior center. Let Janice come up. We worked so hard to get all the things done for the seniors with so little, so this year we tried to get her a little more. So on behalf of the House, myself, Senator Philag, and Representative Canario, we have a check here for $3,000.
And obviously, in the Christmas spirit, we have to add to that a little bit more because she does such an outstanding job and it's well deserved and there is a significant need for the senior citizens. We also have another check on behalf of other members that represent the town of Tibbeton from the Senate and the House, an additional $2,000. So it's basically $5,000.
Thank you very much for your continued support. I don't know what I would do without it. Thank you, thank you.
Fix the roof, Joe.
Thank you very much. I'm going to take a 10-second recess. Um... I'll be right back. Approval of consent agenda. No minutes available for review. Receipt of minutes from the following boards and commissions. The zoning board of review. Economic Development Commission. Historical Preservation Advisory Board 2. Border canvases 2. Correspondence received and filed. Resolutions by the town of Situate, Portsmouth, East Greenwich, Foster opposing adoption of Rhode Island map, R.I., planning proposal. Distribution of approved lists for council liaisons to boards and commissions. Town Treasurer Denise Surratt. Distribution of November budget and revenue reports. Town Treasurer Denise Surratt. Distribution of standard and poor's bond rating report. Town Administrator. Distribution of overtime report for fire and police department. Distribution of Town Council's governance policy. Would anyone like to remove any items?
Madam President, CA 6, please.
Any others? I'd like to entertain a motion for the rest of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Remain in second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor? Opposed? CA 6, Town Treasurer Denise Surratt. Distribution of standard and poor's bond rating report.
Yes, Madam President. I'd just like to speak on this again. I brought this up two meetings ago, but I don't think we had the full report completed. It's a very important report, and I think Denise should come up and speak to it a little bit. I hope we never do this again. You'll see the effect it does have on the town once Denise goes to report.
Welcome.
Good evening. Do you want me to just go through?
Yeah, I kind of highlighted a couple of points. On page three, the weak budgetary flexibility. The rating reflection on page two. Can you just hit on some of the areas, Denise?
What was that, second one you mentioned?
The second one was on page two. The rating reflection of assessments of the following factors. How a fact is entered.
Oh, okay. What you have before you is I did a synopsis in this table of the seven areas that S&amp;P reviews as part of their rating assessment. And just remember that part of each one of these, there's multiple qualitative factors that can impact the score negatively or positively. As a matter of fact, I have this document here which gives you a little more detail of each item, which I got after the packet was put together. So if anybody wants to see more detail. This is not out of scores. This is just their methodology and a little bit more explanation of how things play into what they come up with. So basically what they do is I just give them a plethora of documents, including all of our audited financial statements, our current budget to actuals, continuing disclosure from previous year's bonds. They scheduled a conference call with the Town Administrator, myself, and Steve Nasseroni, who's from Public Finance. And we just sat around and talked for about an hour. They asked us how the town is governed, how do we set the budget. We went through the change from the Financial Town Meeting to the Financial Town Referendum, and how an electors' budget gets on the ballot. The Town Administrator discussed the demographics of the town, where we are in relation to the other cities and towns. An item of note is they just did ratings for Little Compton and Portsmouth, and both of those ratings were AAA. And I did look them up, and it was interesting to see that reading the summary, they both got very strong budgetary flexibility, where we got weak budgetary flexibility. And that's basically a calculation of what our fund balance is as a percent of our expenditures. They were, and they said it a couple of times in the conversation, concerned about the removal of funds from the fund balance. They asked the question, can this happen again? And, you know, we all looked at one another and basically said, yes, it can happen again. Hopefully it won't, but, and it has to come, if it's below the 3%, which is the limit in the charter, it would have to, of course, go to the council for a forfeit vote. One of the interesting things in their methodology, where they rate this budgetary flexibility score that Mr. Perry was asking about, is one of, two of the things that negatively impact the score is the limited capacity to cut expenditures due to infrastructure or operational needs or political resistance, and a limited capacity to raise revenues due to consistent and ongoing political resistance, which can include self-proposed restrictions through charter or local initiatives. So, you know, we basically said we have historically tried to keep our tax increases at a minimum, and last year's tax increase was a record low that was proposed by the Budget Committee. And, you know, they see that as good management, but obviously, based on what they came back with, they were concerned about that area. Everywhere else, I thought, was a decent score. It wasn't, well, it's exactly what we expected. And fortunately, the interest rate gods were shining on us because in this environment, we still were able to get a really decent rate on the bond.
Thank you. I just don't think that we should go out and try this again because those interest rates might not be the same.
Right, right.
A year from now.
Right.
The other part, Denise, I forgot where it was, is where they characterize us from 1 to 4, then 4 to 8, and we're slipping.
Well, they have a, they have a table which they measure our available fund balance as a percent of expenditures. And their, um, I've lost the word. Each level goes from over 15%, 8 to 15, 4 to 8, 1 to 4, and less than 1%. So for you to have a strong available fund balance, they like to see 8 to 15%. We're in the 4 to 8%, but we're very close to 4, and their concern is if this could happen again, we would fall below 4, and that would affect our rating negatively more than it already did. Even though the charter says 3%, theirs is 4.
Thank you.
Yes.
You said that Portsmouth and Little Compton got a AAA. Where, all right, where are we currently as far as our percentage of debt? I mean, I know there's a certain number we can reach as far as how much debt the town can have. Where are you as a percentage basis, approximately, to how much?
I don't have that number in front of me, Joe.
But we're pretty close to maxed out on the amount of money that this town can borrow after this.
Oh, absolutely not, no.
No.
No, we're, um, I have it in my bag.
Seven and a half percent of total government fund expenditure.
I know, I mean, we've got quite a few bonds out now with the school bonds and things like that.
We can actually borrow like $56 million, and we're around, yeah, based on the state's guidelines.
Wow. So it wasn't, sorry, so we're not, I'm just wondering comparatively where we are as far as debt per capita with Little Compton and Portsmouth.
That I don't know, but I can get back to you.
Because I wonder what effect that have. I noticed that on the top it says the economy was approximately 30% of how they base their analysis. We don't have any control over the economy in Rhode Island, which 16% unemployment rate that we have here, dollars of what they want to say of state. Planning, monitoring, and management, 20%. What exactly is, I mean, does that have to do with like our unfunded liabilities?
No, that's, that has to do with the way the town is governed. Reporting, I report monthly to the council, I report quarterly to the state. The management practices, how the Town Administrator oversees the department heads.
So it's our type of government?
That, yes.
Okay. So where would the unfunded liabilities, what portion of that would that lie?
That would be in the debt and continued liabilities.
Okay. Look, I'm just wondering because, I'm just wondering why we actually did drop, was it, I mean, I find it hard to believe that because we didn't drop below 3%, so I don't understand how that could be the largest part of our bond rating dropping. So it's, I'm just feeling like this, you know, 50% of this, I think, is out of our hands. All right, well, we did that dog to death.
Any other questions?
No, I'd just like to mention that if we all did our homework, we would know that all these categories are actually in the pamphlet, and you'd be able to see each single one of them are printed out with the numbers attached to them.
I didn't see it, where it had a sticky report card to tell me where each percentage was. I must have missed it. It must have been on the line, actually, when I first had it.
It goes through everyone.
Goes through everyone.
You'll have to work through it some more.
Yeah, and I don't want to be the dead horse to death either, but I just don't want to do this ever again.
No.
And I'd like the people, you know, out there to understand what we did and what the consequences are. So thank you, Denise, for what you've put forward.
You're welcome.
Well, could I make one? Madam President, we really have another consequence. And if you look at page three, the second, the second page of the summary, it indicates at the bottom line, quote, "Rhode Island general laws limit the amount by which a city or town may increase its tax levy unless it qualifies for certain exemptions to 4% of the prior year's levy." God bless the Budget Committee this year that's going to try to keep their tax levy at 4% after what we did last year. Their approach is extremely well taken.
Anyone else? Thank you, Denise.
You're welcome.
Open forum, public. Oh, I'm sorry. A motion to accept CA 6?
Motion made to accept CA 6.
Second.
Second.
Motion remain second, all those in favor. Open public forum for announcements, comments, and questions. Barbara Pelletier. Signage permits. What's the name of it? Let me read it.
Good evening. Barbara Pelletier. In doing this farm stand, the farm notice type of background, I heard a number of times that it was difficult for the individuals in advertising their products to keep up signage because people would complain and would, it wouldn't be in conformity to our signage law. So I thought one way of moving forward is to have an amendment to the current policy for near-the-street signs, and I think that's probably what the issue was, partially if it was safe or for whatever reason, I don't know. But if we had a uniform signage law, signage ordinance to our current signage policy, which I could not find online, by the way, and I'm sure it's there, it's just I was too dumb to find it, that we could ease this forward, it would be both beneficial to the paper putting out a sign, and it would be beneficial for the enforcer of the signage because there wouldn't be any questions, there wouldn't be any individual questions. Going along those lines, I actually thought it would be nice if everybody had the same type of signs that we could provide at nominal cost or maybe for free. In order to expedite that, I applied for Rhode Island Foundation Innovation Grant, and I think you probably all have a copy of that, the application, which is pretty clear in what my intent is. And I initially asked for, well, I asked for $18,000 totally, but it's over three years, so initially, I asked for an $8,000 grant for both Tibbeton and Little Compton to provide something like a signage board or whatever the council decides would be safe for us to have for signage. But it would be the same thing, and since the I likes to pick out the same thing, it would be good for the individuals involved to have this, and I envisioned something like, like this, where you have a sign, and at the top it would say Tibbeton Farm Fresh or, you know, Foray for Food in Tibbeton, Little Compton, or whatever is going to be decided upon. Certainly, I'm not going to make that decision, but I think it might be one way to go down that line.
We didn't get a copy of that grant.
No, Madam President. She did give me a copy of it, though, and I thought, Barbara, you had asked that the grant part be held for another meeting.
Well, we don't know if we're going to get the grant, but, and I'm sorry, yes, we discussed that, but we're in for it. Rhode Island Foundation is very much on board with pushing this fresh food grown in Rhode Island and fishes, fish from Rhode Island and shellfish and all of that. So we probably will have a good chance at getting one. There were, I think, about 300 applications, and we will know in February. But even if we don't get it, we might be able to secure some sort of funding from other sources like Discover Newport to help defray some of these costs. So we certainly don't have any money in our budget to spend on that, but I think we can help the participants and show our support that we really want to make that go for them. And in speaking to people at different farmers markets and the actual growers, especially the farmers market in Bristol, they're all very excited about this fresh food from Rhode Island. And not only would we be getting the customers on the street, but also the restaurants and food makers of things would know where they are and contact, be able to contact them. I think it's, it's a good all-the-way-around kind of thing. And certainly, the farmers who are busy growing and mucking out stalls and collecting chickens and all of that and eggs probably don't have the time to go seek for amendment to, to something.
I had originally, I thought this was going to be on the regular agenda, as a regular agenda item. I wanted to speak on this so I know what method we need to do to put this on the regular agenda.
It's on the regular agenda.
No, but it's, well, it's on the public forum. I thought we weren't supposed to.
It's posted.
We can't vote on it, but we can discuss.
All right, well, I'd like permission to speak on it, if I could. If you miss a vote this week.
It's on, it's, yeah, but do you have a, it's on here, it's not on here.
All right, I heard Mr. Robic say over time that we weren't supposed to comment.
Yeah, but it's, it's on the agenda, not just as an open forum, but I might be wrong. She's not signed in, it's advertised on our agenda as a topic.
Right. I think, and I think that's probably a mistake where it's placed there, but it was at the request of Mrs. Pelletier as well.
Yeah, it was.
I think the policy of the council before now has been not to discuss items that are in the public forum. The, the law is that you can't act on it and respond to it if it comes up. The policy has been not to discuss it. I would recommend, if you do want to discuss it, you should add it to the agenda just to keep that distinction clear so that you're not having.
But isn't that what Brett is saying, that it is an advertised subject that we're going to discuss?
I understand, but by being on public forum.
Because usually, it's just, this is the open forum.
And I'm probably being just a lawyerly fuddy-duddy here.
So I should make a motion to put this on the, under New Business, move it to under New Business?
Yes, I would think so.
That would be my motion.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, all those in favor. Okay, Joe, speak.
I move that we take G2, our new business, out of order to now, right after A9, open public forum.
G?
It's the one we just created. We just essentially moved Barbara down the agenda, so if we want to talk about it now, we have to.
Okay, go ahead, Joe.
Well, I had spoken with Mrs. Pelletier about this as well, and it, it came to my attention that I drove past Maruda's Dairy Farm for 15 years and never know they sell milk. So now I go in, I buy milk. Now we sell milk, they sell beef, you know, all kinds, butter, eggs, orange juice. So I mean, after driving by there for many years, I thought to myself that she's 100% right, there should be some way that our local farmers can advertise. And if you go back, you know, prior to ZONE, everybody had a sandwich board out in front of their store, and the chorizo was $3.95 or, I guess, $95 back then or whatever, you know. The bottom line is, I thought if there was a mechanism in our sign ordinance that would allow these farmers to have a permanently affixed, cemented into the ground, no chance of it blowing around, but a sign that they could use to advertise what they sell, and, you know, maybe put out a special once in a while, whether it's a tree farm or strawberries or whatever it is. So it was, I mean, the bottom line is, we want the farms to be solid. We want them to make it, because if they don't make it, they start cutting up their properties and putting in subdivisions. We've seen that all too often. We've lost a lot of our green land in this town to subdivisions where, and the dairy farms are disappearing, and the other farms. So I think what at this point was we'll do is we'll put a, on the next, for the next meeting, I'll put it on the agenda again, and with a little more backup on it as I get to look at some of the sign ordinances.
Would that have to be referred to planning?
Well, yeah, my suggestion, I mean, this is going to be an amendment, the zoning ordinance, it's got to go to the planning board anyway. My suggestion would be, you can refer it now, since you're rather than acting on it, but you, that is one of the actions you could take. You could refer it to the planning board right at this meeting, and that's really where you need to make the proposal to the planning board for an amendment to the zoning ordinance.
Well, as Barbara said, we're not talking about anything that would be, it would be a uniform sign.
It still has to go to, it still has to go to planning.
I'm just saying, this was the idea, to have the uniform signs, something that people driving down the road, it wouldn't be offensive. It could have the medal on there or whatever, I mean.
But it still had to go to planning, and then you could make your, you could speak with planning and make that presentation.
And I'll put that into a motion that I would like to propose this ordinance and have it sent to planning, whatever the mechanism is.
There is no ordinance before you.
All right, propose, okay.
So the motion would be to have planning.
I think to refer the suggestions to planning.
Into planning.
And request that they put it on an agenda.
And then that.
Mrs. Pelletier could speak on it, you can speak on it, and discuss what it is you're looking for.
All right, thank you, Mr. Teitsch. That would be my motion.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Discussion, did you want to say something?
I just wanted to say, I think that maybe in the meantime, we could come up with some sort of designs that are fitting to go into the landscape. I was thinking like a black background chalkboard that was sort of non.
You could talk.
Right, and then if they had actual visualers that would make it, that don't stick out like a sore thumb.
The first step has been made, that's, that's the point of planning, so that's, that's the mechanism we needed, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Motion's been made in second, all those in favor.
I just have a question, and it might be, when we send this off to planning, helpful to, I mean, we haven't actually talked about the sign ordinance and whether it is actually prohibitive across the board, or is it just certain sections of the town that these, that these farms are kind of tied up without being able to have an adequate sign.
You want me to?
Yeah, that's fine.
I just, yeah, I think the problem is, most of the farms are in residential zones, which allow the farming which would otherwise control it. It certainly is something to do. I've worked on this in other communities, including South Kingston, has a rather large provision for farm stands as well, regulating both the stands and the signs and whatnot to protect the agricultural community. So it's certainly something that can be done. You just need to look at it, because obviously you want to balance out the, you know, the neighbor, the neighborhood issues between the farms and the residences around them.
And I'll just also say that the Land Use Procedural Improvement Ad Hoc Subcommittee, this has been a topic of conversation the last two meetings, or only two meetings so far. So it's something that we're certainly paying close attention to. Thank you.
Okay. And the other thing was the final, final, ultimate final draft of the early settlers in our town, and just in our town is ready, and it's two pages. I hope to cut it down into a timeline by next spring and persuade a number of people to draw me little sketches to go along with it, and that was a big holdup, the picture thing, and getting the rights to reproduce things. So these, I don't know if you have a copy of it, but, very good. And it's very interesting, I suggest that we all read it. And time and again, I was reminded of Freedom Mo throwing a curse on this town, which I did not include because it's just, it is just acute informational fact, and maybe, although maybe.
That would explain a lot of things, Barbara.
Right, and you know what? The next time we cut off the industrial part, we should send somebody up with a big bowl of Indian pudding, and maybe it'll go.
Thank you. Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to take C1 out of order at this time.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion remain second, all those in favor. I will go back to public hearing in a second. Town Council City has board of licensing non-advertised licensed Tibbeton Sun 497 Main Road. Request tobacco license subject to meeting all legal requirements. Hi. Just state your name and address.
My name is George Mitre.
My name is George Mitre, owner of Tiverton Sun located on 497 Main Road.
Is everything all clear with this license? Nancy, any problems?
It won't be issued without being.
Okay.
Legal requirements met, but yes, did I, did we attach the copy?
Yes, I just wanted to make sure there was no. All right. Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the non-advertised tobacco dealer's license to Tiverton Sun, 497 Main Road, subject to meeting all legal requirements.
Second.
Motion's been made, and second, all those in favor? Thank you, you're all set. Back to public hearings and public presentation, James Camaro, Personnel Board, comments and welcome.
I'm Jim Camaro, Crown de Road, I'm the chairman of the Personnel Board. First of all, I'd like to congratulate all yous on winning the election, some of yous have been re-elected, some of yous are new to the board, so on behalf of the board, congratulations.
Thank you.
We're all public servants in one way, shape, or form, and my purpose here, speaking to the council, is to make the members aware of how we and the board conduct our business, and I want to clarify any concern that the council or anyone else may have about the process and the integrity of the board. I'm sure you've all read in various publications over the past several months that the Personnel Board allegedly has had procedure issues, attendance issues regarding the screening, interviewing, and selection of preferred candidates, along with confusion about the criteria for evaluations of the candidates. I can assure you that that's not the case. These types of comments call into question the integrity of the board, which we all take very seriously. I'd like to state that we, as a board, are charged with fulfilling the requirements of the Town Charter, Section 1007, which tasks us with accepting and reviewing applications for all job vacancies for the town, for town employment, and recommending the top three applicants to the town administrator. All of us are sworn in and take this responsibility very seriously. Our goal each and every time we meet is to find and recommend the best qualified, experienced, and suitable applicant for the position being sought to be filled. It all starts with a good detailed advertisement stating the job description, responsibilities, and most importantly, the job requirements up to including the education, the certifications, and years of experience if needed. This is where the foundation of the interview and selection process begins. Those applicants that meet the advertisement requirements will get interviewed, no matter how many of them there may be. In all cases, interviews for town positions, we always invite the department head to join us during the interview, to support and answer any questions that the applicant may have about the position. This is nothing new, we've done this for years this way. We use an evaluation sheet, which we rate applicants from one to five, from five being the highest, in the following categories: education, experience, qualifications, job knowledge, presence, and suitability. At the conclusion, we recommend and move forward by a majority vote of the board, the three best qualified, experienced, and suitable applicants for the position. In the past, we've had submitted an alternate applicant that was only to be contacted in the event that one of the top three had withdrawn their application for the position. That practice has since stopped. It was done solely to save time for the hiring department, and it's not a requirement according to the charter, okay? I believe that some of the council members are familiar with and have witnessed or participated in past meetings, and we conduct all of our meetings the same way for all positions. We, as a board, are non-political and unbiased toward any applicant that applies for any position. Our board is made up of members who have served from several months to 10-plus years with various professional backgrounds. We have always made sure that we have a quorum, a quorum, a quorum to conduct any of our personnel board meetings. Each and every one of us has the same goal, to identify, interview, and select the best applicant for the town and its taxpayer. We all have a vested interest in this. So in closing, I'm proud to be part of the Personnel Board and its members, because we always meet each and every one of them, they meet with sincerity, with honesty, and above all, the highest of all integrity in how we conduct our business. So I welcome any of the Town Council members that if you want to attend one of our meetings, part of them sometimes in a closed session, because we have an obligation to protect and safeguard the personal information that we extract from the applicants during the interview process, okay? But if you're not familiar with our process, please stop in sometime when we have a meeting. This past year has been our busiest time, we've had over 38, maybe 40 meetings, on the average over the last decade, we probably averaged six to eight a year, okay? So it's been a busy time for us, all right? We're at full staffing now, but at each and every meeting that we've had, we've had a quorum that's required by the charter. So everything we've done has been above board, okay? And when we read things in the newspaper which are not true, we all take it personally, and we all get concerned about the public perception, okay, what's going on on our board, okay? Like I said before, we're non-political and we're unbiased. We don't look at names, we look at applicant numbers, applicant number one, number two, number three, et cetera. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, James.
Have a nice and safe holiday. It's a pleasure, thank you for spending a few minutes with me.
I would like to thank all of the people on your board for their public service, and I have witnessed a selection process for the town administrator, and you do work very hard.
Thank you.
I was there.
Thank you.
As a prior member of your board.
Jim?
Jim, don't go away.
As a prior member of our Personnel Board, I want to thank you personally, I know you've been on there for a number of years, when I was back on the Personnel Board, you were there with me. And I know that all that you said tonight is absolutely true, and you do have a lot of integrity. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Appointments and Resignations, Donovan Clark, Hilton Street, Jim and I are here in for it. Do I have a motion to accept Donovan's right resignation?
Second.
Motion's been made, and second, all those in favor? Natalie M. Cody, Running Management Conservation Commission, do I have a motion to accept her resignation?
Opposed.
Second.
Motion's been made, and second, all those in favor? Opposed. Appointments, Jeffrey L. Bellin, Two Beach Street Recycling Committee, Jeffrey, you want to come to the microphone? He'll tell us a little bit about you and why you want to be on the Recycling Rainfall Committee.
I think I've met with a lot of the people here on the council before, so I know a lot of you've met me in the past. I've lived in this town, we're going on six years now, yeah, I've always been trying to, you know, serve the town, you know, it's in the best interest for the town, yeah, I've run for the council, I've been on the Budget Committee, yeah, I felt that, you know, maybe it is my time to, you know, look at one of the committees, and, yeah, I think I can bring real help to the Recycling Rainfall Committee to try to help improve, you know, the recycling here in the town of Tiverton.
Any questions?
Jeff, is there any one particular idea you have that would help us with the Recycling Committee?
The one thing I have been looking at is, you know, I know a lot of people, especially in my neighborhood, are saying the small bins that we have for the recycling, you know, you get a big windstorm like we've been having recently, they got to put their bins out, you know, the stuff blows all over, and a lot of times, you know, the stuff blows over, okay. The guys from Patriot don't go after it, because they don't know if it's litter or what have you. The one thing I have been looking into, and I have discussed with, you know, on my own, you know, not as a representative of the town, but just as a taxpayer, you know, a member of the town of Tiverton, I've seen Newport, now Portsmouth, and Middletown has gotten the big rollaway bins, you know, they do have different sizes of them. I did discuss, you know, because I know those bins are not cheap. I do remember, because I am originally from Middletown, and I confirmed everything with speaking with Sean Brown, as well as the Recycling Coordinator of Middletown, that they did have a specific thing that they worked out with Resource Recovery, and with what Mr. Lambert had said the other day, Resource Recovery no longer wants us to take that money and put it into our general fund, they want us to spend it on stuff for, to improve recycling. I feel, you know, the deal that Middletown had gotten would further benefit, you know, us in Tiverton as well, so that way we could get the bins, you know, that would help the town. I think the cost benefit analysis for the town, you know, I think if we were to do this, try to get the same deal Middletown had, the bins would almost cost the people in Tiverton almost the next month or year.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
I just wanted to clarify something you just said. We've never put that money in our general fund, just so everybody knows, it goes into a restricted fund, so we've just not been spending it as fast as they would have liked, yeah, I just wanted to make sure everybody.
That's fine.
Do I have a motion?
I'll move for your appointment, Jeff. Yes, I'll second that.
Motion's been made, and second, all those in favor? Opposed. Welcome, Jeff.
Thank you.
Economic Development Committee, one, unexpired term, 7/15/2017. Renee DeJesus Jones, we interviewed the last meeting, Tom Principi.
Madam President, Mr. Principi left a message with my office stating he was unable to attend today due to the holidays.
I don't know what the council wants to do, Mrs. Jones has already shown up for two meetings.
I do have a few questions for you, though.
Sure. Would you like to come up, Renee, please?
You can sit down if you'd like.
That'd be better.
You're better off standing.
Okay, thank you.
Questionnaires.
I didn't ask any questions last week, because I wanted to get both of you together. What do you bring to economic development?
Well, I think what I bring to economic development is the ability to look at different situations with new eyes. I think what happens sometimes is we get used to doing things over and over the same way, and as I talked about on my application, as a therapist, I'm required to be able to have somebody walk in, be able to diagnose a problem, set long-term and short-term goals, and follow them through to successful completion. And I think that that carries over into any program, and it certainly carries over to economic development. And for example, I mean, I'm someone who is very interested in a lot of different areas, but just to pick up on something that Mrs. Palatier said, I think this is something that, the signage is something that economic development can be looking into, it's also something that if the farms, for example, are having trouble getting the word out, that they also have retail establishments or a retail portion to that, and that's something that economic development should be looking into. How can we best promote the fact that our farms are also retail outlets, and that they need to be able to reach their public just like anybody else? So I'm really, I happen to think that I'm very good at looking at a lot of different things and integrating a lot of different information.
Okay. What kind of development would you be looking for to bring to Tiverton?
I'm very much interested, and I know this is, you know, the very big, I'm very much interested in what's going on with the industrial park, and I'm very much interested in what's going on in some of our smaller businesses. As I again said earlier, I did run for Town Council seven years ago, and at that time, I was very concerned, because I did go talk to a number of businesses, and everybody kept saying how hard it was to do business in the town of Tiverton, but nobody had one specific thing as to what was causing that. Now, obviously, we're in an, we're just coming, we're in an economic downturn, we're just coming out of it, so that's something that we have to be aware of. But I think that there's a certain amount of being able to figure out what they are in terms of the needs that these businesses have, and some of these needs go across different boards. It's a question of zoning, it's a question of planning, it's a question, it's a very complicated issue, and I think we need people that are able to go and talk to people and say, okay, what exactly is causing it? It may be different for different business people, and I think that that's something I do very well. I'm a good listener, and I have to say that one of my best assets is that I actually am not afraid to say I don't know, because once you say you don't know, you're able to go and look for the right answer. If you think you know everything, you're obviously in trouble. So I do believe that it's okay to say no, I don't know, because that allows me to go talk to the town administrator and Dave Robert, and if I don't understand something, I call him up and say, can I come and talk to you, I don't get it? So I think that that, my approach is very open, very honest, I feel very comfortable talking to people, and I do think Tiverton has a lot to offer.
Okay, just a couple more. Have you been attending any meetings?
Yes.
From economic development?
Yes, economic development. I've been to the last two, I can't say that I've been to more than that, but I have been to the last two.
And do you think there should be more communication between economic development and Planning Board and zoning?
Oh, God, yes, absolutely. I think that's exactly what I'm saying. I do think that many of the problems that we have are that the issues go across multiple boards, and so you think you have an answer, but then you need, it doesn't meet this particular ordinance, or this particular ordinance needs to be relooked at, or that particular, you know, problem is a planning board problem, not a zoning problem. That has to all be looked at, I think that's clearly an issue.
Okay. One more question, thank you.
Madam President, could I ask one question?
Sure.
You and I have had a number of discussions.
Oh, yeah.
I think it would be safe to assume that we don't necessarily agree on everything.
Okay.
Tell me where I'm wrong in this, after I have a discussion with you, and they're always pleasant, and I hope we're still friends after this. I always come away with the impression, she'd be great operating a mom-and-pop storefront in North Tiverton with two minimum wage employees. That's your, I come away with the impression that that's your understanding of what economic development is in Tiverton.
No, that's not, and if you were listening, you would have heard what I was talking about.
I did, I did listen to it, and you emphasized the farm, I can understand that, you emphasized the small businesses that aren't getting help, I understand that, believe me, I sympathize with that. But what would you do, for example, if another restaurant, or a chain restaurant, or a hotel?
Well, let me just tell you something right now. I've already been in touch with.
It came into Tiverton. What would your position be on that type of concept?
Let me explain to you something that I've already done. A lot of things that go on in town are issues that start in the state. And so one of the things that I have done already is call up Rhode Island Commerce to talk to them about what they're, you know, what they see as things that are good for towns. I've spoken to Smart Growth and spoken to them, and gotten information from them about what goes on and what, what kinds of, I guess, studies have been done to talk about what's best for a town, what brings in the best tax dollars with the least amount of impact on the quality of life. I have no problem, I just said that.
Could I ask you, what does bring in the most tax dollars for a town like Tiverton? What type of?
Actually, one of the things they've talked about is a hotel.
Hotel conference center?
Uh.
That's what I was told by Evan Smith twice, the director of Discover Newport. I did ask that specific question. Tell me what would bring the most tax revenue into Tiverton? His answer was, that's an easy one, it's a hotel with a conference center, because you get a drink tax, a meal tax, you get the, what are they, the hotel tax, and you get the real estate tax.
That's if, that's if a hotel is economically feasible for the area that it's built in, we have an outstanding permit right now for a hotel that has never been built, because according to those people, excuse me, it's not economically feasible. It also, the taxes are commensurate with what actually comes into the town and whether that is fully utilized. So there are a lot of ifs, and I just, I know where you're coming from, and I know what you're trying to ask me.
I'm going to try to be very specific. Would you support a hotel in Tiverton? Would you support a conference center?
I'd have to look at the numbers, and I haven't seen numbers yet.
Okay. So ultimately, you come to judge as to whether or not it's economically feasible, and that's part of your, that's part of your decision-making, isn't it?
What I look at is what the Economic Development Committee is told to look at, and that is what is suitable for Tiverton in keeping with their comprehensive plan, and as far as right now, according to my reading of the comprehensive plan, there is nothing nothing in that comprehensive plan that's preparing this town for what some of these changes may or may not be. So that's where I would go. That's where you start, that's what the Economic Development Committee says.
And thank you, Renee, and I hope we're still friends.
Thank you, Mr. Jay and Mr. Labor, and I hope you still listen to me.
All right, thank you. Can I entertain a motion? Would anyone like to make a motion?
I would move that we, or I will move, that we appoint Renee DeJesus Jones to the Economic Development Committee for the unexpired term ending seven fifteen, two thousand seventeen, and at the same time, send a note to Mr. Principi, thanking him for his interest and potentially asking if he might be interested in another board or commission.
Just a quick discussion. Only that the applicant who applied, I mean, can still attend Economic Development Committee meetings and help out, and I think if he's still interested, he should still attend. I hope he will still attend and not be offended. I don't think Mr. Jones is definitely...
There might be an opening in the near future, you never know.
I think, I think her enthusiasm is what really, you know, the fact that she's actually, you know, been to the meetings, and actually I've seen her at more meetings than I think she remembers, so...
All right, so I have a motion in second. All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you, Renee. Appointment to vacant budget committee position. Louise Durfee, two sixty-two, Island Road.
Can I make a comment first before...
Let's have Mrs. Durfee come up and then... No, I'll, I'll let you do it. Is it Peter? Can you make it after, or would you like to make it now?
He doesn't make it.
Okay. Mr. Mello would like to make a comment.
As I voted on last meeting, that I believe that everyone in this town knew the possibility that Mr. Perry, who was sitting on the budget committee, might become a town council member. And at that point, there would be a vacancy on that board. This budget committee is an elected position, and the voters vote on this. And the budget, the town council did vote to move forward with this case of appointing people, but my personal opinion, and by it again, is that we should be picking someone that actually participated in the election. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Louise, tell us about yourself. You can be brief, summarize. I'm kidding.
Well, I think I tried to, the town clerk, when she advertised, said you could send a resume in or, or an application, and it was, at that point, a little bit easier. I know most of you, I've been around more years than we even talk about, but I am here, and certainly if you have any questions about my experience or lack thereof, then by all means, ask me.
For the people in the, well, I'm sure everyone in the audience that knows Louise, but for the people in TV land, you've been on the town council running off since nineteen seventy-two, and served as the...
Yes, go ahead.
Nineteen, oh, yeah, I'm sorry, sixty-eight. And you served, sorry, Louise, and you served as president in several years.
Right. Want to go through my resume for you? You don't want me to do it?
No. Does anyone have any questions for Louise?
Louise, it looks like one of the boards you haven't served on is the budget committee.
I think that's true. You know, over the years, I've served on conservation, served on the zoning board. Some of that is not on the resume, and each is, has its own advantages, and I suspect that, as Mr. Lambert pointed out, the budget committee is going to be a very difficult assignment this year because of what happened in last year. So you're faced with a six-hundred-thousand-dollar deficit before you even sit down and begin to grapple with the issues at hand. So it's not something that, I think, it's going to be a very tough year. Imaginative issues are not always easy to come by when you're dealing with numbers, but obviously, it's a challenge too. And I'm sure that any budget person that you will vote on or existing is going to be back talking with you a great deal.
Any other questions from the council? Thank you, Louise.
Thank you.
Jane Tevdel, one thirty-one, Avenue.
Good evening.
Good evening. Would you like to tell us about yourself?
Well, I can say that I've missed four budget committee meetings in the past six years. It's going to be an extremely challenging year this year for more reasons than the structural deficit we're starting with. You're also looking at necessary needed immediate repairs at the high school and middle school. You're looking at over seven-hundred-thousand-dollar first-year bond payment for the library. It's coming online. You're looking at a minimum four to six percent tax increase this year. There's no way around it. It's going to be a very challenging year. I'm telling you ahead, there's no way we're going to stay under the cap this year. Get ready for it.
We're going to try, we're going to try, though.
You're going to have to try, you're going to have to try harder than what's in the books, because I spend a great deal of time going over the budget information, and it's going to be a very challenging year. That being said, I like a challenge. I've never been on the budget committee either, but I've been to, as I said, almost all the meetings since two thousand and eight. I see how it goes. I've given my input a lot at the meetings. I don't agree with everything, but most of the people that are sitting on the budget committee that I've spoken to are in agreement that we are going to exceed the cap this year, there's no way around it. So get ready, batten down your hatches. That's just the way it is, that's the reality. And that's only if the library is completed with an OC by June thirty, because otherwise we're looking at a double payment year one.
Any other questions for Mr. Tevdel? Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
I'd like to entertain a motion.
You want to wait?
It's up to you guys. We can wait until the next meeting if we need to think about it.
I'm pretty happy to vote now.
Okay.
All right.
I'm pretty happy to start working.
Right, in January.
Well, my motion would be to appoint John Martin to budget meeting.
He hasn't applied.
He hasn't, he hasn't applied in the council? Well, the council did decide as a whole...
He was a position...
But the coun, Joe, Joe.
He's a qualified elector, right? You mean that...
But Joe, as a council, as a council, we, the majority voted to do it this way, and he did not apply. He could have applied, we could have interviewed him, and he would have had a chance, but he did not apply, so I would think he's not interested in it any further if he didn't come forward.
We actually voted, we voted not to...
We voted to do it.
He came to the meeting and said he wanted his mission.
And we also voted not to, Joe made a, somebody made a motion to appoint him.
Right, and we voted not to appoint him at that time.
Well, at that time, I just made a motion to appoint him. I don't give a second, I don't give a second.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I'll second.
It's already been seconded. No, do second, someone did.
Andy, is this, motion's been made in second, all those in favor?
Hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on.
Were you about to say something, or, because if not, I was going to, about to ask a question?
Um, yes, I was.
Because of what I said.
Well, I think the council did have a vote, which I would say, absent a motion to reconsider by one of the majority from that previous meeting, to solicit applicants and appoint from the applicants. And you provided notice to people of these two names. So I think it's out of order and in violation of the Open Meetings Act to consider someone whose name isn't here. Anybody who was at home, looked at the Secretary of State's website and saw it, saw you only nominating these two. Now, you don't have to pick anybody tonight, you can postpone it, you can reconsider if there's a motion from the presiding, but with what you have currently, that motion would be out of order.
Madam President, Mrs. Mello?
I just want you to know, Madam President, I did email Mr. Martin, I received no response until I asked him if he was going to put in an application or a resume. I also emailed the council to check, because Council Shabbat had recommended and made a motion for him prior, and received back a comment, so I believe he...
He considered it to be a ludicrous draft, and he has a qualified position.
All right, Joe, Joe, you're out of order.
That's not what I...
Joe, all of order. All right. I'd like to entertain another motion.
Madam President, I would nominate Ms. Durfee for appointment to the vacant budget committee position.
Do I have a motion in second? I have a motion, second discussion?
Second, who's the second?
Yes. All those in favor? Two, two opposed, one abstained. Congratulations, Mrs. Durfee, welcome. Harbor Master, appointment December thirty-first, two thousand and fifteen, Tyler Loomis, eighty-nine, John, Devon Road.
Madam President, Tyler's not here. As you recall, last year, he was appointed to this position, December thirty-first of this year. In my opinion, he has performed admirably, although he's a man, he has taken very good care of the boat, he's made decisions around maintenance of the boat that were fiscally approved. He's actually switched vendors, because he felt that we were taken advantage of, and he's done a very fine job of administering warnings and collecting revenues at the town. So I would ask that you reappoint him for one year. In the charter, this is a one-year position, so it would be effective through December thirty-first, two thousand and fifteen.
Do we have an employment agreement with him, or is it just as it says?
It's a little bit more so because it's a charter mandated appointment, so we, you set his salary, and you set the budget line, and that's what he gets paid.
Okay. I would happily move that we reappoint Tyler Loomis to this one, additional one-year term as a harbor master.
Second.
I think he's done a very good job in the dealings I've had with him. Very good.
Motion's been made in second, all those in favor? Opposed? Unfinished business draft, RFP for town solicitors, authorization to advertise, A. General Services Town Solicitor, B. Rayvers Services, C. Legal Services Land Use. Town Administrator?
Madam President, I made the edits that were requested, specifically Councilman Pelletier asked that I add some verbiage as number six in the criteria to judge amongst the applicants. Number six would be experience and expertise in land use, even though our solicitor does not oversee or participate in the direct activities of the planning board and zoning board, frequently litigation and other contributions that are learned from those four are dealt with by the solicitor. So there is that, that need for that person to have that background. Other than that, much of the document remains as it was drafted previously.
Any questions from the council?
My question to the council would be, I set a date in this draft, it's right up on the front, and I'd like to know what your term period is.
That's a little...
It's a little aggressive, at this point, it's aggressive, this is over a month ago at this point.
Yeah.
So how would you like to proceed?
Nancy, the advertising will take...
Well, I guess it depends on where the town administrator would be advertising, but, I mean, I certainly can't make anything by January fifth. So especially with these short dates for advertising, I imagine they're going to put it in some fashion papers.
What is it realistic, the beginning of February, or is that...
Now, am I to assume we're going to follow the same processes that we have followed before, that they will come in, I'll put them together, the council will get copies of all of them, set interview dates, is that kind of the schedule you're looking at?
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, it'd be my opinion, I think you need more closer towards the end of January. So could I just go by the date that I can get the publications in and then kind of figure at least a three-week out for RFPs to come in? Because I don't think solicitor services are going to jump up over the holidays and send you in a resume.
So does that sound all right, that Nancy will set the date once she...
I'll set three weeks from the date I can get it in the advertisements. Is that fine?
Madam President, I do have one question, Mrs. Mello. What will the cost, what do you anticipate the cost of the advertising will be?
Oh, several thousand, I would guess. Or maybe, maybe not, depends where we're advertising, and I think that should be up to our town administrator, where he wants to place the advertising.
Certainly going to avoid several thousand if I can. I mean, I, I'll be perfectly blunt, I'm not a big believer in newspaper advertising anymore. I don't believe that this particular ad is mandated the same way as other ads would following a convention. But attorneys have their own publications, and I would tend to be there rather than the Providence Journal with a display ad, which is pay a lot of money for actually lesser result. We're going to have to go with one newspaper of general circulation in the state, though, but it doesn't need to be a super expensive ad. I'd rather focus on ABA or Rhode Island Bar Association Publications.
Any further questions?
Actually, for the good of the council, I just want to ask the solicitor, our fee arrangement with you isn't set from one date to another, and would be intention to extend the same terms until this advertising period is over?
January.
Well, first of all, yes, I'm happy to continue on at our existing fee arrangement. I've always considered the fee arrangement basically running through the budget years anyway, so I'm happy to continue on at the same price until a decision is made within a reasonable period of time.
Any further questions? Joe?
Yeah, I just have a few questions, Madam President. Now, this is for the town administrator. When you originally set up this general services contract, I believe you mentioned that you went, actually for all of these, that you went to other towns and reviewed other towns' requirements and then put this documentation together. Is that correct?
That's right.
And then the last council meeting, we had the request to add the land use number six to the general services RFP, and I've read this, and I'm a little bit more concerned. I thought it was going to be just a, a similar, a similar item as maybe as in five, where it was more, if you don't have the services as part of your firm, you could subcontract it or on a direct or a subcontracted basis. But in reading this, the number six for land use, it says the town solicitor providing general legal services to the town thus must have commendable experience working with land use... land use issues in Rhode Island municipal court systems and before administrative bodies." That, to me, was very strong wording, and I'm not sure that we need that strong of wording in the general services part of this. And I'm questioning why that it was a must-have versus a nice-to-have.
And my response to that would be, a great many of the issues that I interact with the solicitor are around these type of issues, and no issue more than any other than the street committee. So I'd really like to have somebody as our solicitor, has a familiarity with all of the issues that arise from the acceptance of streets and what happens to paper streets that aren't accepted and abandonment of rights and all of these longstanding issues that the town has yet to fully grapple with and resolve. And thus, and by saying that, it is my hope to try to resolve some of them in the foreseeable future, put some of these issues, they may never go to complete arrest, but at least some legal resolution. So that's what I'm looking for. And I also look at, if you review the litigation activity reports that we get from Ursula Tice and Rich, a great many of those cases are in fact driven by zoning and land use matters. And thus, I think we'd be exposed if we went with somebody who had a very heavy labor and employment background, no exposure to these zoning and planning issues.
I agree that a lot of our issues have been around zoning. And I know that Mr. Tice has been in the town as our solicitor for 10 years, and he has an extreme background in land use, as he has planning background and everything else, and it certainly hasn't helped us in the last 10 years. So I'm not necessarily sure that a must-have, it may have gotten us into more trouble with that experience than not. I would certainly, if there was one firm that had all of these requirements and there's some overlap for planning, and I think planning has to certainly step up to the plate and deal with some of these issues, especially as far as streets go, we've had a lot of issues with sub-development streets. And I think that starts at planning, and that starts with the planning solicitor. So I'm not sure that I would really be agreeable to this must-have commendable experience working. It's like, do you expect them to have 10 years' working experience on this, or what? I'm just not comfortable with this particular addition to the RFP. I don't know how the other councils feel about that.
I think if-
I don't feel all that strongly, but first of all, this is your decision. This is your hire. It is the most expensive personnel decision you'll make, other than collective bargaining agreements. So it's got to say what the council is comfortable saying. So I don't really feel all that strongly about the phraseology must-have. What I think is necessary is that your scorecard includes these six categories. And then, as a body, I would recommend that you establish a point system for reading the importance of these different aspects as between each other to arrive at your scores and inform your decision that way. I do feel, though, as I just said, that this area of expertise is kind of important. I'd rather not be sending somebody to the stacks every time I have a land use question. I'd like to have a fairly efficient answer.
So you don't use the planning board solicitor?
No, I think you would. It's anticipated, as it says here, it is anticipated that separate legal counsel for land use matters will be hired by the town. But to date, just so you, my interpretation of it is that you have a fixed fee basis for your current relationship with your land use attorney, and you very rarely deviate from the planned billing amount. So we're not posing verbal hours questions to the land use attorney that we have right now. Now, if it's your intention for the nature of that relationship to change, it will. But it doesn't mean your spending will go down. It just means that you'll be allocating the work differently, and your land use attorneys will be much more proactive. And the only reason why, it gives me a little bit of pause to say that, is just contemplate the relationship that would exist between your solicitor and the specialized attorneys, and how much slack do you want picked up by your general solicitor versus your specialized attorneys?
The comment I would have is on this land use, and the reason I brought it up was, you kind of went in a different direction, Matt, about litigation and those sorts of dealings. What I was considering was those things as well, but also any zoning change, any alteration to the comprehensive community plan, any, you know, large-scale issue that the town is dealing with land use-wise is done by the council. And it's extraordinarily important. I wouldn't say it's kind of important. I'd say it's extraordinarily important that our solicitor have an understanding of land use law in the state of Rhode Island. I'm not sure what the relationship structure would be if that were contracted out. I understand for criminal prosecution, that's a separate and could be a subcontractor. I think mechanically, if you've got one item on the agenda of the town council that has to do with land use, you now have two attorneys sitting at the table. And that is sort of the way we have done it in the past. And, you know, in the four years plus that I've been on the town council, I think Peter Buschirio has been to a town council meeting once or twice, and I don't think we, you know, that's not the relationship we have with our land use for ZBA and planning board relationship. So if that's what we want to do, we need to sort of have a structural change in how we advise the council on legal matters. But I think it's extraordinarily important to have someone who can answer land use-related questions, especially complex questions. We deal with them very frequently, and I don't see we'll be dealing with them any less frequently in the future.
Madam President? Well, just looking at history in this town, where I've seen contracts that were designed specifically for specific vendors by putting in information that was pertinent to that particular individual, that they wanted to be brought forward as a candidate, without going into too much detail, we've almost went to court a couple of times because of things like that. I mean, where contracts were very specific in sizes of machinery, and the only person that owned that machinery was that one contract. Everybody else had something a little bit different, maybe just a couple of inches in design different. But the contract went to that person because he had that specific machine that was that. So, you know, I mean, these services may be, you know, desired, but it shouldn't be quite, I mean, in other words, we want all applicants to come forward, and not be proficient in everything we're asking for, but, you know, people can pick that skill up within a limited amount of time. We also have other professionals supposedly in town that are qualified, you know, in zoning, like a building inspector and, you know, some of the, if we do hire a planner and he's qualified, he'll have some of those skills as well. So we're not totally reliant on a solicitor, you know, for these items. So I just caution when we're going forward with this, you know, RFP that we don't, you know, go down that road.
So I'll just say that I suppose must-have is not a deal breaker for me. I like the substance of the narrative rather than the specific words, must-have commendable experience. But I would just say that the only person I take legal advice from is our solicitor, and I'm not willing to have someone who is going to wing it be paid by this town to provide professional services. So whether you want to water this down to may-have or subcontract it out, that's, you know, that's fine. But ultimately, the guy who gets points from me is going to be somebody who's got a strong background in a lot of different issues.
So Joan, what wording would you be comfortable with, since you have opposed to the wording? The town solicitor providing general services?
Good question.
Does anyone have any suggestions? Matt, do you have a suggestion?
I'll take a step back and simply rephrasing it this way. It is preferred that the town solicitor providing general legal services to the town have experience working with land use issues in Rhode Island municipal court system and before administrative bodies.
I think that's fine.
That's fine. Is that okay, Joan?
Are you replacing the whole paragraph?
No, just a sentence.
Would you like them to repeat it?
Going from preferred to desirable or something like that?
I like preferred.
All right. Could you repeat that, please?
Preferred?
Thank you.
It's always wrong, Matt, it is always wrong. My notes, I'm sorry. Quote, "It is preferred that the town solicitor providing general legal services to the town have experience working with land use issues in the Rhode Island municipal court systems and before administrative bodies."
Okay.
Would anyone like to make a motion to accept the RFP with the changes? With the change?
I have a question. Are we accepting the RFP as a form that we can use, or are we suggesting that it be authorized to be advertised at this point? Not yet. It's a nice, it's a nice form. I'd vote for the form. We're not going to vote to authorize the send this out or to advertise it.
Would be the council's pleasure.
Okay.
Would you like to approve and send?
First, I'd like to make a motion to approve the changes to the form.
Second?
Just the town solicitor's form?
Just the town solicitor's form.
General services?
Yep. Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Opposed? You want to look at the legal services land use now?
I looked at this.
Any discussion?
Just a procedural question. Did you approve land use and labor last time and just carry over general, or did you carry over all three?
All three.
I believe we called, am I right? Yep.
I'll make a motion now to approve legal service land use and legal service labor council.
Second?
Discussion? I don't believe we approved it, but I might be.
What is the virtue of approving it? That we acknowledge that it exists?
We acknowledge that it is.
We like it.
We like the form.
We like the form, we like the content.
We agree to the wording.
Quickly for the RFP?
Just for the RFP.
Yes.
No. Not to send the RFP?
Not to send it out yet.
Not to send it out.
I said to approve the RFP as its-
Right.
I don't know what that means.
It's to approve the forms.
I know if you, when you repeat the same thing-
All right, I understand that, but what I'm saying is, we are not saying to send it out yet. That would be another motion.
I know that, but what is approving mean? What does the actual act of approving this mean? It just says that we like the language?
That we like the forms.
Approving our language in the form.
Right.
Which means it'll be sent out, correct?
No.
I don't know what that means, so I'm going to just-
I thought we were giving him permission to advertise.
Right now, we're just approving the forms, we're not changing, we did some changes, and then we'll have a vote to send it out. We could have done it all together, we chose not to. Do I, so I have a motion and a second?
I don't have a second on the second one to move the land use.
Second? Yes, you did, I think Joan did. Motion's been made in second, all those in favor? Oppose? Abstain?
I abstain because I have absolutely no idea with that motion.
Okay.
Okay, we'll make it clear this time.
Wait, now, next motion.
I'll make a motion to advertise all three.
General service town solicitor.
General services, labor council, and land use, legal services.
I'll second.
Discussion?
The current, the people that are in those positions would require to apply well.
Yes, they can.
They are welcome to apply.
Same, they're not, I think.
They wouldn't be required to, but if they wanted consideration, they-
I'm saying, if they want to-
They said they would be considered, they have to apply.
Motion's been made.
Madam President?
Yes.
My comment is, based on the way this has been handled at this point, it seems that we've already made a decision that we're almost, as a matter of routine, are going to be sending out notices and advertisements for legal advice and retaining legal counsel as a matter of routine every two years. And my understanding of whenever you have an employee or whenever you have some sort of professional relationship, I'd like to make sure that somebody is actually complaining or that I have some concerns or that I have some issues that either with that person or that I can do a better job out in the marketplace and find someone who I think is more qualified. That's normally how I would handle that type of situation. We're now talking about sending out three advertisements that would cover all of our legal requirements. But we're doing it simply as, it seems to me, as a matter of routine. That's my concern. And I, at least at this point, I have no reason at all to believe that we're in a position at this point or have any need to look for other counsel on any of these issues. If that happens, I've approved the forms. If that happens, I've told Mr. Tice he has 12 hours to get out of here. Or, because none of these contracts that we have would in any event be enforceable against the town by legal counsel. We can fire legal counsel at any time. So I approve the forms, I think they would be perfectly fine. But as an example, Mr. Buschirio, who provides legal counsel for the planning board at this point, I think I've met the man twice in the last six years. I don't think that I'm in a position to decide that, you know what, he's really not qualified, or maybe he is qualified, and maybe we could do a better job with someone else. Am I really in a position to do that at this point? I'd wait to hear from the planning board or someone else. I'm not saying it has to be a matter of public knowledge, but at least I'd like to think that I'm accomplishing something by spending a few thousand dollars putting out these ads. And then I'd like to think that we're actually qualified as a board to make the decision that based on a 45-minute or 15-minute interview, that that will trump the experience that we've had and that the town has had with these people over a period of years. That's my position. I'd like to comment, Madam President. Have we gone out for bid in the last two years?
Brad, we did it.
Town solicitor?
Did we ever?
It was, um-
Have we gone out for bid in the last 10 years for town solicitor?
Yeah. It was during his term. It was during Brad's term, I believe.
When did we do it?
We went out for RFP for a special solicitor to handle a specific litigation case.
No, we went out for RFP in addition to that to-
No, we never went out for, to replace our general services contract.
Okay, so how do we know that there's no one out there that's better? If we haven't even interviewed anyone else in 10 years? And I'm not saying that there is, but there might be. But we don't know that because we haven't done it. So yes, I'm willing to take the chance and spend a couple of thousand dollars and find out what is out there. In the long run, it might save us money. But we will never know that until we do it. Well, I hope the test won't be saving money. I'm sure we could, well, I think we could set the price for a lot of young students coming out of law school, or a lot of lawyers that may or may not be qualified to meet our requirements, but hopefully it's not going to simply come down to a question of price.
Madam President, please. I'll just say, Jay, it's our-
Yeah, a little.
Breath quick. It's our obligation as elected officials to make sure that the town gets the best value. And this is the process. You go out to bid, you make sure that the town is getting the best value for its dollar. You go out to bid, you make sure that the town is getting the best value for its dollar. We may be getting the best value now, but we don't know that until we compare. It's comparison shopping. That's the way you save money and get better value. So it may be that we find somebody cheaper, but you know, we don't feel that he's as well-qualified and as well-rounded, so we'll end up having additional counsel come in if we hire that person. So I mean, it's, but to me, it's, it's, you know, being good stewards for the taxpayer dollar.
And I agree with that concept. That is, if I was unhappy, if others would make, on boards and commissions would make it clear that they're unhappy, I'd be the first one to suggest we should be out there in the marketplace. But until that happens, I'd, I think our experience is better served by whatever our relate, our current relationship is. If we're not hearing complaints, if we're working with, with professionals at this point and working satisfactorily and have absolutely no reason to believe that we're going to get better services, I, I just don't see a reason to, how a 45-minute or a 15-minute interview is going to change our thinking on that.
Madam President?
My thought.
Jay, I, I understand where you're coming from. I really do. During the last, the last council term, the solicitor's contract came up for renewal and I was the one that voted against it because I did have concerns and I had a specific example. And there are plenty of examples where there has been need for more thorough work, more thorough examination of documents. And I've been on the council four years and I have been displeased with the level of service that we have received. And I think it's time to go out there and get some other bids, get some other people, review them, review their qualifications and see if we can get someone who's better qualified for a better price. That's my opinion and you may disagree with it, but I have to say it because that's the elephant in the room. If you're not satisfied with the services, I'm not, and I'm saying it out, straight out, I'm not. And I would like to go out for RFP to see if we can get better services.
Any further discussion? Yes, Andy.
I haven't said anything because I, obviously, I've got a partisan interest here, but I just want to say something here. And while I appreciate Counselor Lambert's support of me, just as I disagree with Counselor Shabat's comments, I think those really are irrelevant. I do support Counselor Perry's view of you, it makes sense to go out a certain amount of time. Probably doesn't make sense to go out every two years, but it does make sense. You've already gone this far, you've approved it this much. I'm happy to hear that you're saying that I can't apply for it. You're not saying that I, you're, you definitely want to get rid of me and you have that ability. As Mr. Lambert said, you can fire me at any time. So with that being said, I, I do support this as well, going out for the RFP. It makes sense as, as an overall basis. Although, Jay, I thank you very much for your support and I'd rather doing that, but, but when I, when I look at it totally disinterested, I have to think it may, you know, make sense to do it.
Thank you, Andy. Do I have a motion on the floor?
Yes.
Okay.
In a sec.
I just want to make sure. I thought I did, but I.
For the general services, labor council, land use.
Motion's.
By Counselor Perry, seconded by Counselor Susan.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Fight the two. Financial business, there's none. New business, that would be me and Counselor DiMendes' discussion and possible schedule of workshop with zoning, planning, economic development, and I'd like to also add to that conservation committee. I thought since there's a new council and there's a lot of development, talk of development going on in town, that, that we might want to get together with all the boards and kind of just very open agenda where we discuss our concerns. They can tell us what we can do to help them. We can assist them with that, with whatever they need from us and, and just have a general discussion about what we see, where we see Tivon going. I was hoping the ad hoc committee could help with an agenda and because Brett has had a lot of experience with the meetings of all these boards, that he could help write an agenda. But like I said, very open and maybe we could all meet each other and it, it won't hurt to all know that everyone that's on all these committees. Do you all agree? I was thinking we have a fifth Monday in January. Am I right? No, we don't.
No, we don't.
The 20th. No, not too much. Well, either we could talk with the plan, I would like to do it in January, maybe at the very end of January. I don't know that they have available. You're right Nancy, we have an ad hoc community on the 19th.
Planning and zoning, why don't I send them a little something, see what dates? They have to kind of set that at their next date, so if you want to give some.
What do you think? Beginning of February, the end of January? We're kind of both, um. Brett, do you have any preference?
No, not at all.
February is wide open right now.
February is wide open.
You want zoning board of appeals, planning board, economic development commission and conservation commission?
Yes. Did I forget anyone?
Have we reached out to zoning yet?
I have not reached out to zoning. I've talked to a few members of the conservation. I talked to a few members of the planning board. I think they're open to it, but they would have to discuss it as a committee and see if they'd like to meet with us.
The ZBA has always been, shall I say standoffish about these sorts of things because they are quasi judicial board and they, they tend to take the position that they don't.
I agree.
More involved in execution rather than development of, so I'm just throwing that out there.
I agree with that, but I just thought it would be helpful to meet them and maybe just throw some ideas around. And I understand that we, we don't have, they have a quasi committee, but it, it might be good if they hear our discussions also. The week.
Do it on a Tuesday.
Okay.
Zoning board meets on the first Wednesday. Planning board. Budget committees on Thursday.
Would you like the, why don't we try Tuesday, this, February 17th?
February 17th.
School vacation, okay. Tuesday, February 10th, but we do have a council meeting that Monday before. Is that alright?
Tuesday, February, February 10th. That's not valid. Tuesday, February 10th is open as of now, but we will remember, you have to meet with the budget committee.
On Thursday.
In January.
It's in January, it's not in February.
I would say the 10th would be problematic just because that would make three meetings that week I will have to attend.
Okay.
Council, EDC, and this meeting, and that's a lot.
How about the 4th week in February? Do you have a lot going on there?
No.
And that's not school vacation, right? I'm kind of out of the loop with school vacation. So you want to try the week of, you want to try the 24th?
That's fine with me.
Well, school vacation's beginning tonight and I have a couple of separate plans to come back. Might work either that or the second. Could I offer them the 17th and 24th so that we come?
Sure. Is that alright with everybody?
I'd like to pretty much see the agenda before we commit to a meeting. I mean, I, you know, what are we going to talk about? I mean, is there specific policies the council's proposing that we're going to be moving forward or?
No, Joe, I'll be honest with you. I just thought that we could talk with them about what we vision going forward, what, we have campaigned for economic development, we want businesses to come in and maybe just talk to them and see what we can do to help them if they feel that we are an obstruction or the town's an obstruction. I don't think it hurts to have an open conversation with the people in this town, planning, zoning, that influence.
I just, myself, I have open conversations, a lot of them all the time. I mean, I pretty much know most of these people and have had conversations, but without some sort of a.
Well, that's why I asked.
It's going to have some purpose. I just, I'm not ready to vote, to have, to vote for another meeting. I mean, they just, I don't want to.
Well, that's why I asked for the ad hoc committee to try to put together an agenda. I will meet with Matt and Brett and we'll see.
Well, I have some items I'd like to bring up at a meeting with, but I, I, I think they're, you know, they, I have some other proposals I'd like to see go off the planning similar to the sign ordinance, so it's, you know, it's.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Just all.
Well, that's, that's just it. I mean, I, I, I want to make this as productive meeting as possible, not just sit around and complain about the past like I've seen in so many meetings before when we talked about what could have been.
That is not my intention at all. That is not my intention at all.
Well, plan of action, I think, should be forward.
I was going to say, Madam President, Peter just made a great suggesting, a suggestion, and that is we begin putting together a list of items that we'd like to have addressed. For example, I'll give you one. Reading the Herald News and getting the timetable that was used in Fort River for the development of the Amazon Distribution Center and the timetable that was being used or proposed for the casino. One was for four months and the other one is for a little over a year. And I'm thinking to myself, are we doing something wrong? And I don't know the answer to that. But I'd like to ask the EDC, I'd like to ask the planning board, is there some way we can streamline this? To give you an example, and this is the most obvious example, the Capri Amato project. You know that that's been here now on the table for about three years. Why can, why can the Herald News write an article this past week that they expect that the Amazon redistribution, distribution center will be completely open and operating by the spring of 2016? Makes absolutely no sense at all. Those are the type of questions I think that Peter would like to put on a list and I have a couple of questions that I'd like to informally just get some answers to.
Well, I can pretty much already tell you why it takes that long. I'm not going to say.
Well, no, but I, I don't.
I would like to hear it from the people that serve on these committees and have some kind of input. And like I said, maybe there's something we could do to help them move forward. And I just thought it would be a good idea, especially since it's, it's the beginning of our term.
A simplification of our zoning and the processes is pretty much what's needed. But to get to that, we need extensive workshops and to really sit down and look at this stuff, but.
Well, maybe they will have suggestions and maybe we can start the process. Joan?
Yeah, just a, a quick comment. Are we expecting to have the, the committee that Mr. Warchak has been heading the group committee? Are they going to give us recommendations at this meeting? Is that, is it like a status or not, that committee as to what changes could be made or? I, I just need to know a little bit more rather than just a.
I think it's part of the pie, counselor. We, we convened the land use procedures improvement ad hoc committee with the goal of following up on those issues that have already been raised and by the public and by elected officials in this town and to seriously dig away at the pieces of work that are involved. So we only had two meetings. We've already sent a set of municipal court rules regarding zoning matters as a recommendation to the municipal court judge. Thanks to the work that's been done by the existing solicitor and the special counsel like Gina DeSenzio. I have posted or announced at our last meeting that at the January 19th meeting, we would go through the same process for the zoning board. Because my concern, the zoning board and the zoning procedures in general across Rhode Island and not just in the town of Tivon, is that zoning officials and zoning boards don't build the kind of record of decision that is necessary to sustain their decisions for appeal. And that that process of information gathering and decision-making is actually helped by rules of procedure that get all the facts on the table so that everybody feels like they've been heard and the decision is final. So those technical aspects may be of concern to the council, but you may also have more general policy directives that you want to put out there and thoughts that you want to reinforce to the planning and zoning boards. And from the perspective of economic development, one of them may be, are your processes streamlined enough? What is the record that you want to build in terms of the future revenue stream of the town and bringing those general considerations into the forefront for them to consider? Those are the kinds of things that you can do as a council with, with that group that my little committee is more focused on technical matters.
So I would just say this, Madam President. The, these issues are extraordinarily complex and the more people we put in a room together, the more complex they can get because we've got now conservation and economic development. And so some sort of framework, I agree, would be better sooner rather than later so that we can at least narrow this conversation to a productive one and one that serves our needs and keeps direction where we agree we have direction, giving authority and I want this to be productive because we've had conversations like this before with these various groups that unless you have a structural framework, they don't, they don't prove terribly fruitful.
Well, that's why I brought it up. I wanted to hear what from everyone and people who have been working with these committees also. If you want to submit some topics that we'd like to talk about by the next meeting and then we can discuss them, elaborate on them or take them off the table. On the planning board and the other committees could do exactly the same thing. Get together a list of what they would like to discuss as a whole with all of us and then we'll put together some kind of agenda. So when you contact them, Nancy, ask them if at a meeting they would like to get together some agenda items that they would like to discuss. And if it, if it ends up being too vague, this is just something that I put out there on the table.
Madam President, could we also have an understanding and picking yourself from Brett's, Brett's comments, that this most likely would be a preliminary hearing? I don't see how we're going to accomplish everything at one hearing. And I think we should, I think our understanding going into this should be, this may require two, three, four meetings, five meetings, six meetings, and leaving every three or four months until we're all satisfied when we leave it alone with whatever we see as the issues. We're not, we're not going to do it in one meeting.
My initial thought was to open the lines of communication.
Yeah, that's it. That's correct.
And start some kind of process where we could all come together and.
I think that's, I think it's a great idea, Madam President. At least to get all these folks in the same room. At least the first time and then continue this. I mean, we need more workshops. I talked to Brett one time and we don't realize workshops as, as much as we should. And I think this is an area that's extremely important to this town, to the planning and zoning and conservation. And I think we should all be on the same boat and talking to each other. So I think it's a great idea to, to get it going.
I, I think, you know, the more regular we are with conversations among these groups individually and as a whole, the less it feels like these meetings are, you know, a summit with Putin or something because there, there's not enough familiarity and there's not enough, um, whatever the, you know, grad school business term is, synergy, that we use, but pick that one, between these groups. And it, it becomes kind of a, you know, there's so much stuff. Where do you start? There's so many things going on. What do you do? Who knows what and.
Madam President? Brett, I'm president, I'm sorry.
No, I'm done. Stop.
Only that, one thing I've learned in life is, you know, if you want to move a mountain, you don't just get behind it and start shoveling. You move one shovel at a time. And it's kind of the approach that we need to, I mean, I, when you try to take on too much in one shot, it, it just seems to become overwhelming. There, there are small issues in this town that plague the small businesses. You know, and they are obviously the majority of the businesses in our town. And if we can tackle one issue at a time, I think Mrs. Palatia brought one up today about the farms being able to advertise. You know, there, there are issues in town where we have businesses that want to be able to expand, but they're, we are made pre-existing non, for some reason, we are made pre-existing non-conforming uses. And now, we really like to make their businesses better, put up the rebuilding, put up the, you know, the, the plantings in the front, but because the town made them a pre-existing non-conforming use, they can't even put up the rebuilding. So they're stuck in that old chicken coop out there doing whatever they do. So you know, so there's. old chicken coop out there doing whatever they do. So, you know, so there's, I think we need to look at issues like that and attack them and accomplish, and actually, you know, stick to one issue and accomplish something, and stop trying to look at the broad view. You know, I just mentioned there were so many issues, but bottom line is, we need to pick one, accomplish it, move to the next, accomplish it.
And that's what we could talk about at this meeting, that we all wanna go in the same direction with different issues, and we can pick issues and...
And one more comment, Joe. Those non-conforming uses is part of our state law. You should, yeah, we need to read those first, and understand that that dribbles down to our town.
Well, not all the non-conforming uses are because of state issues.
Why don't you look at them for us?
Well, I actually have.
All right, so, I'd like to entertain a motion that we try to set up a meeting between the Zoning, Planning, Economic Development, Conservation Committees. Preferably, um, we'll go for the 17th and the 24th, and we'll instruct the clerk to contact, um, these committees and see when they're available, and also ask them if they have any agenda items that they might want to put, to discuss with us.
The 25th is a wide open date.
We'll do the weekend of 16th and the 23rd, see what they're available, and then we'll bring it back to the council.
Just to be clear, I'm gonna just send it to the chairs of the committee, or like, I guess, Jody and Kate, 'cause they would get it to the, uh, prep ones at Conservation. However, you're just saying that you want them to also come up with ideas, because each one, each committee is gonna have an opportunity on this agenda to state what some of their issues are and all. It's not just...
Right. And then I think once we have...
Just walk with everything.
No, it has nothing to do with that. And then once, once, as Dave said, once we get all these issues, maybe we could focus on certain ones and get back to them what we could do to help them and what they've accomplished.
One concern, I'm just, you're looking at a calendar. What is this new, next schedule for the ZBA, the EDC? They just had a meeting last week.
The ZBA is on...
In Conservation.
Well, they always schedule the first Wednesday. If they don't need it, they don't...
I know, but we're gonna need these people to vote and get back to us and provide us with material for an agenda item. And if they're not meeting until the end of January, then we're in a tight time crunch.
The Planning Board, I don't have this committee for January 6th or... Oh, I'm sorry, the 6th. So, if I get an email out tomorrow or Wednesday, at least to, that they could put it on the agenda, because they need it next week, just for discussion on whether or not. And then hopefully, they'll get back to us so that I can put it together for our meeting on the 12th. Just your information.
And if, if they decide it's too short, notice, then we can always discuss what to do and go to March. And, and then if the council, if it's okay...
We'll have their, your responses, and even if I have to just send it out email to council, that's fine.
That's good.
Is there a motion second?
I, I stated what the motion should say. Does anybody want to make the motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion for man, second, all those in favor? Opposed. Thank you, everyone. There's a request for proposals. Janice Gomes, Senior Director, requests permission to waive bid process for my senior center computer system and award.
She's got the money. She's already spent it.
Good evening.
Um, I'm requesting permission to waive the bidding process to purchase an all-in-one computer statistical keeping, uh, system through, um, SHI, which is on the state bid list.
Any questions?
Mr. Tyson. Uh, at the last meeting, you told us we had a problem with waiving the bid process. How do we stand here with this?
We were waiving it.
That was a particular thing with this. Well, first of all, it's on the state bid list. Um, and second of all, it's clearly a unique item for programming software for...
For senior center.
The senior center. But the key thing is it's on the state bid list. So...
We're all set?
I believe we're all set, yes.
Janice, can I just ask, why, what is the difference between sponsor-based model and a regular model?
Um, the cost.
Obviously.
Um, the, uh...
Looks, the specs look similar.
The regular model is $11,000. They will go out and find a sponsor, they, uh, obtain the sponsors.
Oh, I see. Advertising.
Yes.
Oh, okay. I see. Sorry. Thank you. That should've been obvious to me, but it wasn't.
Any other questions?
Janice, this is nothing that the seniors are gonna have to do anything with, correct?
They'll have a scan card. They'll have to...
So, you know when they came?
In our touchscreen, yes. So, they'll log in, whatever activity, volunteer job, whatever they're going to do. It will lessen the load of hand entering everything into the computer to come up with the figures. And hopefully, it will make more people sign in than they do now. We have to chase them down, so hopefully, this will make it easier all the way around.
You won't be communicating with other senior centers?
No, no, no. This is strictly for people using the senior center, coming in for activities, lunch, volunteering, um, whatever they're gonna participate in for the day.
I mean, I read it, and it sounds like it tracks, it tracks everything for you.
Correct. Lets out whatever report you made at the end of the month.
So, that'll be easily available to you quicker.
Correct.
Okay.
And councilman, it's primarily of use when you're applying for grants.
Right.
To support your activities. The number of unique accounts and the number of visits and the number of hours spent. We instituted the system in the City of Tivenin when we instructed human services there, and the quality of the data we got was very, very good. And for the price, this is already in the budget, you went to the budget committees, you know, last year with this.
And it's a one-time purchase.
One-time purchase. Then there's a maintenance agreement.
Twelve to every year.
Let's entertain a motion.
Move that we approve, approve, or grant permission to waive the bid process for my senior center computer system and award the bid to SHI of somewhere in the world. I guess it doesn't matter, but...
Somerset, New Jersey.
Somerset, New Jersey.
Somerset, well, the Massachusetts phone, yeah. Somerset, New Jersey.
Second. Motion's been made in second, all those in favor? Opposed. Thank you, Janice.
Thank you.
I thought yours or mine?
Deputy Deputy Director, we would request permission to advertise for designing fabrication services for Main Road State Road Town Sign Line, Town Line Sign.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Um, in my agenda request, I think I explained everything. We had a, an original Town Line Sign, and I thought, I think it, it said North Tivenin Business District. It was knocked down by a drunken driver. Uh, we pursued an insurance claim, and we collected $5,310, which the treasurer is now holding in a reserved account. So, I think it's enough money. I mean, I could go out onto our people that make us be living signs and something like that and had welcome to Tivenin, population 15,000, da-da-da, but I think we have enough money to go out to bids for a real designer, uh, someone that can put a lot of thought and experience into making a sign that's artistically pleasing, that addresses the community, uh, is longstanding, um, and, and can fabricate it. So, uh, that's what I'm asking for out of growth, to bids for not only someone that can make a sign, but some of the artistic, uh, expression and experience that can present us with something the town can be proud of. Um, Kate, Kate was gonna kind of look over it for the artistic value, and I was gonna look over it for the structural and material value. So, I mean, that's the combination, but if there's another combination that you wanna put forward, um, but again, it's not a big project. It's a $5,000 sign. Some of that may be advertising. So, if we can keep the budget as low as possible, we can spend more money on the signs, so.
Joe?
This is the right of state in Main Road that...
Right at the Chinese restaurant, right?
Yeah, yeah, that one.
Yep.
It was also an island below that.
Yeah, we're gonna have to rebuild the island to kind of protect the sign a little bit in case it happens again. Protect the investment.
Lolly columns or...
I don't know. Maybe a stone wall or something. I don't know. Well, it, it has to be attractive. Obviously, it doesn't look very nice right now, so.
My comment would be like, if it'd be nice if you can get a local business, something in Rhode Island, to design the...
Well, by laws, again, it's, we get the best, the best firm, and then we look at the price second. I'm sorry to say.
Yeah, well, I hear you. I hear you. Hopefully, that'll be a Rhode Island firm.
Madam President, I've got, we're off the wall here with this one. Um, it seems like we're, it's not an urgent sign that we have to put up there right away, correct?
Yeah, it wouldn't be the spring anyhow, I wouldn't think.
Could this be a project for our schools? Our high school?
I don't know about material-wise, structural-wise, um, design-wise, maybe through our hot department.
I mean, it's something that they could all corroborate with and, and come up with a beautiful sign for the town. It could be a project for, for the high school.
I can see the design, but as far as building the sign, I think you'd have to have a professional that can do the silk screen or whatever.
They built the boat.
Well, but this...
And it floats?
And it floats.
It has a reflective material on these signs.
That's what the design's all about. That's, that's, that's what it's all about.
It's sort of a, oh, you have the reflective material.
We could always, um, approach a school and see if they would be interested in it.
I think it's worth a shot.
It would be a nice thing for the community.
It's just that, for the design, and then put out this construction and fabrication.
You're saying as a design, but not for construction, is what you're saying, right?
Well, let's, let's, let's ask the question, and you're either gonna give a yes or no.
Ask the question. We can go to the industrial arts department and ask them if they could do it.
She's shaking her head, yes.
Yep, she's saying yes.
You can ask, well, you can ask the question.
You wanna do that first?
Fine, okay.
Sally, would you, um, you'll take care of that? Thank you.
All right, I'll work with Sally on that.
Is that okay with everyone?
We need a motion.
We do. We probably do need, well, no, because the motion was for bid.
I'm gonna postpone it at this point.
And that's not what we're doing right now, so I think, I think I'm right, right, Andy? We can hold off.
Well, yeah, you're...
Yeah, we're not...
Have something to table it or continue it?
I'll continue it till the next meeting. I'll make a motion to continue it till the next meeting.
Second.
Motion for man, second, all those in favor? Opposed. You're welcome. Good idea. Council announcements, comments, and questions?
Who skipped me?
Did I skip you?
You skipped me?
Yes, I did. I left it out of your night, and I'm already...
I'll be, I'll be quick. I think that was preferred.
Somebody's gonna get a dollar if I left it done.
Isn't it costs the clerk a dollar on board? The Pajitza Trash Bag Holiday, Holiday Free Trash Bag Program is continuing this year. Residents may include up to two non-Pajitza trash bags on a normal trash pickup day during the week of December 26th through January 3rd only. Correct, Steve?
Yes.
Only. I'm gonna read a bit more of Steve's announcements. The Tivenin Christmas Tree Recycling Program. Tivenin Public Works will collect Christmas trees during the weeks of January 5th through 9th and January 12th through 16th. Residents are asked to place or discard Christmas trees curbside adjacent to the trash in the same day as their normal trash collection. Trees must not have any plastic, tinsel, or decorations. Trees will be mulched and the mulch that results will be made available freely to residents of interest in the landfill during normal operating hours. If you cannot put your tree out with the rest of your trash, you may leave it by the landfill during normal operating hours, what's Tuesday 7:15 a.m. through 2:30 p.m., same hours on Thursday, 7:15 to 2:30, and Saturday at 7:15 to 3:00. I do a good job? Thank you, Steve. Um, we may recall the Solarized Tivenin Program was established by the state, state as the administrative conduit for the naval energy credits and other programmatic incentives for the use of solar power. And the deal basically works like this. They would through a bid process to choose an installer. The installer would have exclusivity within this program, not in the general world, but just within the program, the administration of the credits. The more people sign up, the cheaper the installation will become because you're dealing with volume. So, there were several reviews from the state and then three from the town, former councilman Bill Growak, Gary Plunkett, and myself. And we have arrived at a consensus. There were two bidders. We arrived at a consensus for solar power, S-O-L-P-O-W-E-R. Uh, the founder of the company is just a young man. He's an MIT mechanical engineering graduate, and he's formed a cooperative program, and they've done some of these installs around. But what was most impressive was the fact that, A, they're going to work with Little Compton at the same time as Tivenin, so we get the benefit of working with a neighboring town. May have a little competition. We should beat them five to one, just thinking. Um, but this program was most recently implemented in North Smithfield, and we had some 86 contracts. Just to reiterate the importance of this for the town of Tivenin, the town draws electricity from a feeder that at present time can no longer handle summertime peak demand. So, that's your air conditioners and other high-power usages in the summer, to the point where National Grid will have to build an additional station, transfer station for electricity at expense to the ratepayer, unless we do things like this successfully and cut the energy that's demanded during that peak time. So, it's, it's an initiative supported by the federal government. I would encourage residents to pay attention, because it'll be a lot of advertising. Basically, what boils down to is, if you think you have a home with western or southern exposure, and you wanna take benefit, take advantage of the program, you reach out to the lead salespeople. They'll sit down and give you the full briefing, and then you sign up. Um, where are we with this? You know, all of these systems, the, the base case, the typical case that's put out there, it's about $14,000 system. After all the rebates and credits and the else, it works out to be about $9,000 all in. And, uh, you know, it kind of depends on your energy usage, how much you'll save. But payback, the commercial applications pay backs two to three years. Residential, it's closer to seven, eight years. But it, it makes sense to proceed on this basis, along with the other conservation efforts. So, if there's any questions about that, residents can call my office in the, in the intervening time. And I'll remind residents of Tivenin that Code Red is fully operational in town, and there's a, a way to sign up for Code Red on the website, and I would encourage as many people to do that as possible. It helps us communicate with you in the event of an emergency. It's a system the town bought. We pay for the minutes as we use them. Uh, it's, we have actually not activated it yet, because we have a policy in place. We are only going to use this for essential communications. Um, my last, I've, I have two things. Um, one is, we're approaching budget time, and I'm part at work getting to that point where we have a presentable document. And I'm going to present as much information as humanly possible to review historical trends and trade-offs and choices that face the town. I don't know how much Mr. O'Dell and I will agree from time to time. We certainly agree on this. The town of Tivenin has a lot of granite, and if you were to pull it all and squeeze it all, you might get a drop of water out of it. But you now face major existential issues as a town with your capital assets, the equipment you operate at the Department of Public Works, the structure and size of your public safety departments. You have now reached the point where, you know, I'll be honest with you, if we sharpen our pencils, we'll find a way to save money in each and every one of these accounts. But it won't get you from point A to point B, which is a healthy town that delivers services at a high level of quality. And the reason why we need to have these major existential conversations is because it informs your debate over just how much commercial tax base you need and what you can do for the health of your residential tax base. These major issues need to be prioritized and filled out. And I'm taking the overall approach as an administrator's hat. I can do budgets all day long. I can come up to you and, and try to, you know, really nail it down and try to keep it within it. Or, I could present to you what it is necessary to run the town as well as possible so that you can have a debate as policymakers over what your priorities are and where you wanna go with it, and then fit it within what you're willing to pay for going forward. But there's a lot of things hitting all at once. Your library bond, your needs of your schools. Moving the library means we now have another building coming online. You disposed of one... way or the other. You need not be a rocket scientist to walk up on the roof of this building and realize that it will not be much longer, the shingles are falling off. We have, how many trucks are 1980's vintage or 1990's vintage at Department of Publics? Four, five of them? They're inefficient. One example that kills me is, we're trying to hot-patch potholes. We send a truck these Providence to pick up hot patches, the closest plant. We don't have a hot box. By the time the truck gets back to town, these guys start working, they're going to waste a third of the load, just because it's going to solidify in the bed because it's too cold. That's not an intelligent way, in my opinion, to run an operation, and we need to start to make the capital decisions that support an efficient, cost-effective operation. So that's what you'll see reflected in the budget as I finalize it. And last but not least, I proceed on this topic with some trepidation. Mrs. Durfee has left. It's come to my attention that in a recent planning board meeting, there were comments made that did not, in opinion of some people, reflect well on the town's administration, not just me, but others, who have met with applicants who are proceeding forward with large projects in town. And I take those comments to heart because I have so many things, I do not know Mrs. Durfee, but I have so many things in common with her, and I worked for John Chaffee, and I would consider myself to have decent gross margin and other environmental cred. Having said that, I would respectfully disagree with some of her perspective. My concept of public service is that when individuals come to the town seeking information, seeking guidance, and they come into a public building and ask a public official for information that is publicly available, I do not think it suits us well to say, "You can read," and turn them away at the door. If we're trying to be business-friendly, we're trying to be a very highly professional organization, we maintain our neutrality, but we provide people with the guidance that they ask for. And the policymaking bodies of the town, the planning board and the council especially, will make the decisions. We don't. We're here to serve everyone, for the public who has a need. If we took the perspective that we would really do that, we would have a very unfriendly building here, we might as well lock the door 24 hours a day, because the vast majority of people that come in here are asking us questions. So whether it's a residential home builder asking, "Well, what's the setback against that line, what's the setback against my front yard?" Or a larger development saying, you know, what is the, you know, what are the criteria of interest to you in traffic studies and fiscal impact statements and how does it all work? Those are the things that I feel it is part of our employment contract to provide people with answers. And when it comes to making the actual decisions, frankly, I think that process gets the most information and the most well-vetted information to you as policymakers. So that's my perspective on this. I know very well when we get close to a sensitive issue, and in this particular instance, we had already checked with legal counsel and gotten the go-ahead, the green light. So I just wanted to put that issue to rest in as respectful a way as possible. Disagree.
Madam President. For Mike, please. Just very quickly. On, well, you know, each year I've watched as the budget process goes on, I've watched the administrator come out with the first draft, and it always seems to be, you know, well, we can, you know, go back and cut this and cut that and cut this. I just want to say, as far as I'm concerned, I, and I don't know how many of the people who counsel support this, but I don't want to see a budget come out with more than a 2% increase regardless of how it works. That's my personal opinion as far as the town side. I don't know how the rest of the council feels about that, but I don't want to play this game where we sit here and cut this, and I want our department heads to dig in and make it work. We're in a tough year, we've been in these years before. This is going to be another tough one with the bond coming on, and I don't want to go to the voters with anything near a 6% or even a 4%. I want to be at least a 2% increase and no more. That's my personal opinion. And I'd be willing to, you know, take the hit. If we got a cut in areas that are not popular, I'm sorry, but, you know, we have people in this town that are struggling. Whether people believe it or not, the real unemployment rate in this town is about 16% if you look at the real statistics, not just what the Department of Labor is talking about. A lot of people out there struggling, we can't go with another big hit. We might not pave any roads this year, we may not make any capital, and we may have to wait another year to buy another truck, but that's just the way it is. We've got a lot of things coming online, and that's just, I just want to be right out front and say, that's where I'm going to stand.
My response to that is, my bias is, as I said, to present a working organization. However, I also think it is incumbent upon the administrator to give you recommendations for the cuts you would make to get to different goals, including a 2% or a zero. But in doing that, don't assume that I would support those initiatives.
I don't.
But I'll give you what my best guess would be, or my, it's not a guess anymore, what my best judgment would be on what is, what I can see best for the town going forward, not just one tight year, because frankly, you're, I don't know that you're going to have an easy year for the next 10 years because of the way bonds are financed and the amount of demand you have on you. And so, one of the things I'm trying to do is present not only a one-year budget, but a five-year forecast. Now, it's difficult because you have collective bargaining units that will have agreements coming up within those five years. Actually, they all will, but some of them as recently as next year. So, I'll have to supply my best hypothesis and what you think you're going to give them, but it will be sobering to look that far ahead in the future and realize how little, you're not making a one-year sacrifice on whether or not you're going to buy that truck. You have to have confidence that you don't need that truck for the next five years and still be able to deliver basic services to the town, to taxpayers who are already paying a lot. And that's where I think you're starting to get, you're starting to get to the point where the basic level of services provided to the taxpayers of the town pales in comparison to the sacrifice they make to pay those taxes. And so, that's a difficult place to be, and without playing my cards too much in the open, well, it'll be open enough in a couple of weeks, growth is going to be your strongest solution
Agreed.
to a long-term resolution.
Okay, I'm going to move on. Council announcements, comments, and questions?
I have one, Madam President, and it's with the Budget Committee. Right now, they're lacking a chair and a vice chair, and there is no one to call a meeting for them, I believe, which is in a little bit of a bind.
So would you like to call?
I would, I would take that on if you'd like.
Could you schedule it and?
I think, well, I don't think our charter specifies, but generally it's, then whoever is the most senior member of the Budget Committee, or in the alternative, the clerk has the authority to do it, either one or the other, to call the meeting.
I prefer that.
All right, Andy, call a meeting.
They've got them scheduled, haven't they? You just need somebody to post it.
Somebody to announce.
We need someone to announce it, post it.
Post it, send it to the members.
Andy, if you... Thank you.
Any other announcements from the council? Town solicitor items and announcements?
Thank you, Madam President. First item here is, just for your information, notice of intent to enforce from D E M versus William McGlaughlin and Deborah McGlaughlin regarding 1640 Fish Road. Obviously, this has been a long-term, ongoing dispute item, so we wanted you to be informed of it. I am going to ask you also to add this to the executive session agenda for a little bit further discussion when we get to that. But this is a public document. Questions? No? Okay. Next item, the Bay Street area moratorium, and it's a little bit out of order in the sense that you have Exhibit A as your A item, but it really does give me great pleasure after many, many years. We are finally turning the corner on Bay Street and the cleanup. And what you have here in Exhibit A is a list of properties that have been remediated by definition. Now, that doesn't mean that every single one of these properties is completely clean. Some of them are complete, they have letters of compliance and reading immediate action closure reports, others have land use restrictions on them. But based on the memorandum of agreement and the settlement agreement, the properties, the plan was to do it sort of as a block-by-block basis, and this is mostly block-by-block, but some others, but these are the ones, as you can see, over the last three months, we've got several of them recorded. So, the second part, B, is a motion to extend the moratorium, which as I point out every six months, is not a moratorium on doing anything there as far as building or digging, it is moratorium on doing anything without taking proper precautions due to the pollution constraints, and requesting that you extend it further till June 30, 2015, but accepting therefrom the specific properties listed on Exhibit A. So these properties would not be subject to the moratorium.
Madam President, I just want to reiterate that Bay Street from the Fall River Line to Judson Street belongs to Riddon. And I just want to reiterate that, it's going on the record, we have documentation, the state legislature accepted that section of road in 1935 as part of the state highway system. So my question to B, can you place a moratorium on state property? And I don't know, I'm just asking that question.
Well, to whatever extent we have to do it, we've done it all along, and if it's not binding on them, then they'll ignore us as they usually do. I don't think at this point we're going to change it one way or another at this point.
I just want to point it out for, you know, for the members.
That is correct. And at some point, they will have to deal with the unpaid portions the right of way of Bay Street, which are probably still contaminated.
They certainly are still contaminated. Okay, thank you.
So I would request a motion.
I can detain the motion.
I move that we extend the moratorium on the Bay Street neighborhood to June 30, 2015 with...
It's on the back.
What?
The back page.
Exempting this therefrom, the specific properties listed on Exhibit A attached hereto, and also just mention that we are going into our 11th year dealing with this.
Second, motion made, second, all those.
On the moratorium, you said that they're able to, for instance, if they needed a septic system, Mr. Tights, they'd be able to put a septic system in, provided they were abiding by what rules as far as contaminated soil, or is it? I'm not really understanding what you're saying.
Yes.
They won't be stopped from putting, if they need a septic system, they'd be able to put a septic system in.
They'd be able to put a septic system, but they'll have to be the examination of the test pits to determine, A, where, you know, what the soil is, what they're cleaning to begin with, and as they're digging for the septic system, there needs to be an environmental person there, unless it's an area that's already been remediated, there needs to be an environmental engineer present, so that if they come across the contamination, at that point, it has to be handled carefully, it has to be removed, you can't just dump it on top of the other dirt, it's got to be in plastic, it's got to be tested, that dirt may not be able to go back in, it may have to go for specific handling.
Yeah, similar like when they do a gas station remediation, pretty much, the soil has to be, the biologist has to, you know, inspect the soil.
Exactly, exactly. And I mean, the good news is, Bob Hoffman is under contract to the Bay Street Neighborhood Association, and he's also contract, under contract to the town, and he's very good, and he's also one of the few people out there, he's got his own $40,000 portable analyzing machine, so that as to some places where they do the sample, they send it off to the lab and get an answer in two weeks. He can do it right then and there and give you an answer in 10 minutes on a lot of these chemicals. Thank you.
How many properties do we still have outstanding?
I think this is 24, and we had 84 altogether, so it's 60.
Yeah. I anticipate there'll probably be a lot, there probably won't be much for the rest of the winter, and then they'll probably, hopefully, the push would be to get all these done, the rest of them in the spring.
I have a motion on the floor that's been made and seconded, all those in favor? Opposed? Town clerk, items and announcements?
I just have two quick things. On the consent agenda was your governance policy. I believe I also emailed it to everybody in Word in case they had any changes, so that will stay as is unless someone amends it. By consent, it was approved this evening. And I have one other issue on licensing. I know Mr. Tights and I don't truly stand on the same page with this, but it is very difficult for some of these businesses, and we try to be business-friendly in there, it's difficult for some of them to meet their taxes and to meet what is required up at the state level for them. Now, we have, we approve licenses, subject to meeting all legal requirements. Part of those legal requirements are that our taxes are paid, if it needed a zoning certificate or the fire department or the fire, and if it needs a police department inspection or fire a building. Those are handled. The issue, I mean, it would have been very easy for the clerk's office to say, "We have no licenses today, it is, you know, December 1st and we're going to close down seven or eight businesses immediately." And instead, we try to work with them quickly to get them in. But one of the key issues that I have that, is that when someone has a business, and if they are the owner of the building, we require that both the real estate and the tangible tax be paid. I have a case where I have been letting it go, the real estate is not up to date. Keep in mind, we are protected, the town is protected on real estate, we have tax sales every three years, and we are protected on that, we generate interest from it, no one goes without paying their interest if they're late. But we do require it, therefore, some businesses are struggling but have to come forward with it. And if we, I have one or two that pay the tangible, but not the real estate, I'm going to have to bring them in for a show cause before the council. To me, I feel we're protected on that, if the council is going to have leniency on that issue, as I would like, but I understand that because we make everyone pay their real estate, but, I mean, I'll be closing businesses, I mean, you'll have to shut them down if they can't pay that. So I know the council wants to be business-friendly, so I thought, well, maybe I'll, I promised the person I would raise it with the council. I can't, I'm not asking for a vote or anything, I'm just asking you to consider this, because I may have to put it on. And I hate to bring them in for show cause, for not being able to keep their real estate up, but we do get every penny due on interest, and we do have the right to tax sale after three years.
And I just want to say, I don't have a problem with the town council changing that policy. If you want to change it and say, "Real estate taxes are not included in that, subject to meeting all legal requirements," that's fine, but it's just my understanding is, at least up till now, that has always been the policy. That's where we disagree.
And are we?
Barely disagree.
Okay, so.
So, what are the, what are the impacts of this? This person has been granted a license.
There were at least three or four, and a couple of them have struggled to get them paid. In this case, tangibles paid, real estate's not. So I will have to bring her in for a show cause, and I will have to say that, you know, she is operating without a license. But I have to tell you, on December 1st, this could have happened to a lot of these businesses. It's a tough time for business.
Madam President, please. Is it, are we talking one quarter? I mean, it's multiple quarters?
There's different issues. The one that's right here now, it's always one step ahead of a tax sale. So that is a struggle to come up with at this point.
So we're approving license, subject to meeting all legal requirements, and they're getting issued not meeting all legal requirements?
Well, they're not getting issued.
They're just...
So I'm going to be bringing them in to say, "You are operating without a license."
Okay.
All right.
I do not issue the actual license without them. I do not issue the actual license without them.
You just kind of give them an extension.
Because that's your directive. Be prepared when they come forward. Maybe the next meeting, I will have a listing of what I am requiring on these, and you can...
Why did you do that?
Pretty nice.
Anything further, Mr. ... Mr. Lambert, you ready?
I need to make a motion to that we add R.I.D.E.M. notice of intent to enforce a water pollution violation against William C. and Deborah A. McLaughlin, 1640 Fifth Road, to the closed executive session agenda for discussion purposes only.
Second.
Motion second, all those in favor. Next.
I move that we go into closed executive session pursuant to the ground general rules, Section 4246-502, Donnelly versus Tiverton, Allen District Court.
Second.
Motion made in second, all those in favor.
And staying closed executive session pursuant to the ground general rule, Section 4246-502, litigation by Fortler versus Town and Tiverton.
Second.
Motion made in second, all those approved, opposed.
And staying closed executive session pursuant to the ground general rule, 4246-502, by litigation, quarterly litigation report from our town council.
Second.
Motion made in second, all those in favor.
And staying closed executive session pursuant to the ground general rule, 4246-502, by litigation, discussion about pending litigation.
Second.
Motion made in second, all those in favor.
And staying closed executive session pursuant to Section 4246-502, a potential litigation zoning board.
Second.
Motion made in second, all those in favor.
And staying closed executive session pursuant to the motion made by Mr. Palitsier, Ray Allen, K. Lynn, moving it into the closed executive session for discussion only.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed.
I just thought that if somebody really needs business, maybe we could all, if we knew who they were, could all spend money on...
We could try. Depends on what they sell.